Okay, we'll call to order this May the 22nd, 2019 meeting the Franklin County Commission. Your call.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
President.
Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Chair Howard?
President.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
President.
Commissioner Dunn?
President. If you all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Pastor Scott Dickinson of the Michigan Valley United Methodist Church.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning Commissioners. I'm building a little boat out by my house, didn't know if I needed a permit for an ark.
A big, big one?
A big boat, yeah. But, oh wow. Let's pray. Lord, thank you for your love for us and your protection. We continue to pray for our Commissioners for wisdom, guidance, and for our county as well. We pray for our road crews as they get out there and some of the roads have been flooded and things, just to help them as they do their work. Yesterday, as I listened in and heard of all the calls that the deputies had out to people stranded in water or not knowing where to go, we just pray to continue to be with folks that they use their heads in those situations, to continue to be with our law enforcement people, our EMS and our fire people as they deal with all that. Allen and his guys at emergency management as they deal with river levels and all the other things that go with it, continue to be with them and as they put in time and try to keep us safe. We thank you for that. Lord, continue to watch over us as a county as we reach out to each other, to those who have needs, and Lord, as we go forward in all the things that are going on in our county. Thank you for the people, I'm thankful for those who lead us, and Lord, for just the things that are happening around us. We had that recent storm and just the way neighbors take care of each other, it's awesome in our county how that works out. But Lord, continue to watch over us going forward with all the things going on with more rain coming in. I want to pray for our farmers, not much they can do out there, but Lord, we pray for them, watch over them as well. Lord, thank you again for all you do for us, for keeping us safe and protecting us, and Lord, now just help us as we do the things we need to do in your direction, and we ask it in your name. Amen.
We don't have any, of course, branch of organizational business. Do we have public comment, I assume?
Yes.
Citizens desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes and the Commission will not take action to discuss items at this time. Discussions shall be limited to matters of County Commission business and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or pending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date.
Jean Hurt?
Good morning. Jean Hurt, 219 West Forest Street in Linden, Kansas. As I told Mr. Dunn as he came in today, I come in from the west and I'm sure he did too. The sight that you see out there is just totally devastating. I saw farmers out there this morning as I came over in tractors taking hay to their cattle because they can't get through the roads. And you can't go nowhere between Pomona and Williamsburg, and the barriers are up at Quinamo, you can't go down there, it's flooded out. Everywhere I saw water coming into this town, when I came into town, I thought, well, can I drive down Eisenhower? So as I got into town, I turned and went south, just there a little ways, about 100, maybe 200 feet, the water is lapping to go across Eisenhower as I came there. Now, that's been a while since I've seen that. I figured the water would have been over it from what I saw coming in. But I can guarantee you, they're saying between 4:00 and 10:00 o'clock today, this afternoon and tonight, another four to five inches. Now, you know, this should be a disaster area of this county. Osage and all the other counties are already declared disasters, but I didn't see Franklin County. Now, somebody in here, a administrator, and you have got to do that because I appreciate Mr. Dickinson's comments because there, he's coming from the heart, I believe, about what our feelings are out there to all those farmers and people that live and have all this disaster in front of them. I see Alan Radcliffe is here today. I hope he's got some good comments about what's really going on out there and what he's going to do, or anybody else. But now I want to talk about this. See, I've not done this before and I'm going to do it today. The, if you go on Facebook, you'll see what pictures was from Proximity Park, all flooded water. You've got equipment sitting out there that they dug around that river on the north side. Did you get permission from the EPA to do that? You can't just go in there and change something like that just because you think you're going to solve something, because they'll come after you. And that's already been questioned to me this morning, okay? Now, Neil Knight is one of them that was on Facebook. He says, "I cut four road ponds out this morning on my way around to work. County roads with gravel curbs is a bad idea. Have shovel, will dig." Another person, Homer Dunn, spoke. Why two miles of sidewalk around in the industrial park? Must be cost of an extra half a million dollars. Yes. And see, there's no ditch between the highway there and the sidewalk. That is not the city out there, that's the county, it's south of I-35, and no ditch. I guess you want to make it look like it. Well, I'm sorry. Then one other final thing is, you, Mr. Stottermeyer, the lady I told you about some time back, asking you to make comment about your feelings for your people in your district, you didn't say nothing? She and about three others, she told me a day or so ago, told me, she said, "We wish we would have voted differently and then Randall or Noel would be sitting up there, not you." Because that's despicable. I think each one of you should say something today for your people in your area. I'm proud that Ian did, for what she said for what happened almost to her one day about the hail hitting her in front of the windshield, she wanted to get in the backseat. I think you need to do that, you've got to show some expression to those people out there who you represent. Say something! Don't sit there. I know one man that did. He sat right where you sat, Dunn, years ago, many years, Don Hay. Don Hay would have said something already by now, before this meeting started, to everybody, of how he feels about his people out there, of what they're experiencing, what Don did. Don did it. He did, many times. Thank you.
Any more?
Norman Woogie?
Norman, just before Norman starts, I'm going to go ahead and say now that we're adding, it's not on the agenda, there will be an item two on the agenda, which will be Allen speaking about the emergency, and it will be to talk about a declaration of an emergency for the county, so that will be on the agenda, we're adding it. We were going to do it in correspondence and organizational business, but decided to put it on the agenda as an item, so that's coming up, so let you know that. Sorry, Norman, go ahead.
Norman Woogie, 3790 Pony Road. I haven't been here for several weeks. Probably should be building a boat. I'm not here to praise the Commission either, but it'd be okay. Top priority of Franklin County ought to be the safety of the people. I came down Oregon Road, there's no signs warning that it's a flood area, it should be a flood area. And of course, some of you were on the Commission when I was driving to Kansas City on Tennessee and ruined a tire and a wheel, didn't lose control, but, and now there's holes in it, and there's lots of excuses. And it amounts to money and time. We need to get kind of the priorities straight, that safety's first. Secondly, and this is on kind of a positive note, the road and bridge are handicapped with the buried lines, the telephone lines, and the Commission gave many years ago, probably around 1994, to bury those lines, and the people that buried the lines didn't do a very good job. And several years ago, I talked to the AT&amp;T repair person, because we've had trouble all along having good service, and he said that in a short time, they have available where you don't have to use the buried lines, and people should be made aware of that. So, we was without phone service for about a week, and they finally got it fixed on the Sunday, and in the meantime, I got with my cellphone service and got on no buried lines. We can hear better, there's no grumbling, you know, on the line, and they were charging us around 60-some dollars. And now we have caller ID, we have free long distance, and we finally negotiated AT&amp;T down to $42, and now it costs 20, and we have caller ID and all the nice things. Thank you very much.
Okay, takes us to the consent agenda. There's no claim vouchers or tax change orders today, so the only item on the consent agenda that needs considered and approved is the Franklin County Commission meeting minutes for May the 15th, 2019, for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion is our second.
Second. Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Epstein.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes. Okay, takes us to items of business. Our first item of business, consider for approval a resolution directing Stevenson &amp; Brand, LLP, to institute a judicial tax foreclosure auction in the District Court of Franklin County. Derek?
Yeah, Commissioners, you'll recall last year, we hired Stevenson &amp; Brand to do our tax sale for us. Jeff Hyman is the name of the lawyer that did it, did a very good job, has built good rapport with both myself and with Jody, as well as the city attorney and other players in this tax sale. The first step to actually conducting a tax sale is to execute a resolution whereby you authorize us to do that, and so I'm asking today that you authorize that resolution. This is going to be another very big tax sale. The one we did last year was large because we hadn't done one in several years, and then this year's, we are going to put all of the Wade LLC properties, also known as the Coves up in North Ottawa, on this sale. It's my understanding that the city of Ottawa is working on a solution regarding all of the special assessments on those properties, and so there is optimism that we can put the Coves to good use, but the first step would be to foreclose on those properties. So what we need this morning, if you're ready to do another tax sale, is for you to execute the resolution, and then I regularly speak with Mr. Hyman, he's willing to come down here and speak to the board again if need be. You'll recall he did that once before, otherwise we'll jump right into it and get going. I've already been in touch with Crouch, they're ready to do the title work. With regard to fees, you'll recall that Stevenson &amp; Brands has a lower rate that they charge governmental entities, so we're getting a very good rate for this. I'm here to answer any other questions you might have.
I said we did this last year and it worked out very well for us, so I have no questions. Anyone have a question on this?
Do you know what the resolution number is?
It would be 14.
19-14? Okay. If no more questions, I look for a motion to approve resolution number 19-14, a resolution directing Stevenson &amp; Brand, LLP, to institute a judicial tax foreclosure auction in the District Court of Franklin County, Kansas.
Make a motion to do just that.
I would second it.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yeah.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Rick, before you move on, I'll just kind of tell you how this timeline will go, so Stevenson &amp; Brand will send out demand letters to each of the individuals that own properties on the list, giving them 30 days to pay their back owed taxes. In the meantime, I will have Crouch start doing the title work on some of the properties, the Coves, for example, they're not going to be redeemed, so he can start doing the title work on those now. Once that 30 days lapses, then we can start the actual legal proceeding, and from there, we're kind of at the court's mercy a little bit because they, you know, we don't dictate when we go on the court's docket, of course, that's the judge, and so, but we will start moving on this immediately.
Okay, like I stated earlier, this, we added a second item, which will be the consideration and proclamation of emergency for Franklin County. How was going to talk to us about that?
Well, contrary to what some of the public comments were, we have been watching the water levels and the storms since they started two or three weeks ago. We had water, if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, the river got up, the water currently is only a couple of feet higher than it was a couple of weeks ago. What we do in our office is watch the river levels. We also know that Pomona Lake and Melvern Lake are holding back a lot of water, that's the reason they were put in for us back in the 60s, is to help with flood control. Currently, to give you an update of where we're at, yesterday, the city of Ottawa closed the flood gates, they have a flood plan that they are following, they're monitoring the levees for the city of Ottawa on a 24-hour basis, which is part of their plan. They closed the flood gates because at a certain level, which is 33 feet, they typically close the gates. The water level this morning at Ottawa is just a little bit over 34 feet. Just so you know, the record for Ottawa is 42 feet, that they, I saw that either last night or this morning. I've seen the water levels a lot higher than what they are. We do have water over the roads, along the river basin, from the west side of the county to the east side of the county. We had some of the same roads go underwater two weeks ago. We've been working, we had a meeting with our county Public Works yesterday, they've been out for the last two or three nights and during the day, putting out barricades, moving barricades, we've had some flash flooding, as you know, anywhere in the county, we've had five to seven inches of rain. All of our water doesn't come just from our county, it comes from Osage County also, and the current basin for the Merida Zine River is all in a flood warning. So Osage County and Franklin County, both are included in that warning, and then we also have the Potawatomi Creek that's down by Lane, that's in a flood warning also. So we're watching those. We've got plans in place for water rescues, we set that up yesterday, we've done two or three water rescues with the fire departments and sheriff's office, so far, nobody has been injured or we don't have any fatalities to report. So this morning, we are to the point, with the forecast, we're supposed to get some more rain tonight, we're currently working with the National Weather Service to see what that forecast looks like for the next five days, and we're also working closely with the Corps of Engineers on the lakes and the lake levels. So I talked with Derek yesterday afternoon, and in my opinion, we're to the point that we need to do a declaration to let the state know that we may be asking for resources outside of our county to assist us. And just so you know, one of the water rescue boats that we have on standby is a state resource, it's the Kansas Wildlife and Parks. I had them bring a boat in yesterday for us in case we needed it. I've also contacted Douglas County and Anderson County to assist us with water rescues if we need them, if we get real busy. Right now, they're just on our call list for mutual aid if we do need them, but we're also in meeting with Public Works yesterday, we know we got some road damage, they are starting to work today to gather the information in case this does become a federal disaster in the state of Kansas. And we have certain trigger points on dollar amounts that we do have to meet. I think we're going to be pretty close, if not over, our dollar amounts, which are just under $100,000 for Franklin County, but for the state, we need about 4.3 million in damages, and I know we've got several counties in the state that have already declared for different reasons. With those, there may be a possibility of meeting the state threshold also, so this is just one of the steps that we have to take to ensure that we could also qualify for FEMA funds if we do meet all their guidelines and the state does get a declaration from the federal government. So, under State Statute 48932, the County Commission has the authority to do a local disaster declaration, and I would ask you for that today.
I just lost my computer.
Yeah, me too.
This will be resolution number one?
19-1.
19-1?
It's not a resolution, it's a declaration.
Declaration number 19-1. Okay, any questions for Allen on any of this? If not, we'll-
I have one. So when you do a declaration, does that include farmers also, or is that a different area? This is just for-
What could happen for the farmers is small business loans and USDA, that's a different part for funding, and generally, what you see happen is low-interest loans for the farmers. This just covers our critical infrastructure and ensuring that the public is as safe as we can make them.
Awesome.
Questions? No, we look for a motion to accept Declaration 19-1 to make this state local disaster emergency for Franklin County, Kansas.
I would say no.
The motion is our second.
Second.
Motion is second, Jim.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottermeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Thank you, your department, for all your extra work.
I appreciate it, and we'll continue working. If you have any questions, you've got my phone up, you're welcome to call anytime.
It takes us to staff reports, Derek?
Yeah, talk a little bit, piggyback a little bit on what Allen said. Obviously, very pleased with him and his staff, we're fortunate to have Allen, he is considered a statewide resource on emergency management, and has done a real nice job, particularly in working with Public Works on, so to get this state and federal aid, you do have to be able to itemize what your losses are, and so we're already working with Public Works on doing that, you know, gravel costs, other infrastructure costs, so that we have an itemization, so that once, you know, the feds are ready, we can send that to them, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll see some funds from that. I mean, I think most of eastern Kansas is underwater, so I suspect we're going to meet our federal threshold, the question will just be in this particular county, are we going to be able to, and depending on what happens in the next four or five days, we'll know. I know David will talk about this more, but I think his guys have been basically working around the clock to try and do everything that they can. Was it two nights ago, I think we basically had everybody out all night long, and so we're doing what we can to try and take care of them, but when, you know, we, as you guys know, we only have so many staff members and you can only work so many hours in a day, and Mother Nature has to cooperate, which so far, it hasn't been, and so, but certainly appreciate the work that David and his staff have been doing. And Janet, feel free to chime in here, but we met with our auditor yesterday, and he has completed our audit. That went exceptionally well for us, there were no real issues to report, so this was the audit of our 2018 budget year. He will be back in front of you, I believe, on the 10th of June to go over that report and talk about, I mean, there were a couple of small things, but he's always very flattering to talk to because he, I think he really appreciates the work we do here, and we try to run a, you know, very detailed, very solid ship, and so, look forward to getting him in here to talk to you about that.
That is a study session, just so you guys know, he was unavailable on Wednesdays, so he couldn't come back on a Wednesday, so there won't be anything to vote on, he'll just give an overview of the audit.
We've hired a new community corrections director, Dustin Browning is his name, he comes to us from the Topeka area, very excited to have him. Had a, we had a couple stages of the interview process, and he really excelled in both stages. He brings a series of strengths to the organization that really complement our assistant director's strengths, so we think the two of them together will make a, are going to make a real good team, and so that brings our leadership team back up to fully staff, so we're excited about that. Still on pace to have our budget meetings with you the week of the 17th, so 17th and 18th is probably when, unless you tell us otherwise, when we'll plan on doing that.
How does Derek spell his first name, do you know? Did you say Derek?
Dustin.
Oh, Dustin.
Yeah.
I will not be in town the 17th, we're going to be out of the country and actually get back in. The 18th I will be here, but I won't be here the 17th. I think we actually get into New Orleans on the night of the 16th, so.
Okay, well, we, Janet and I can, I mean, we're still a few weeks out, we can go back to the drawing board and look at what, that's kind of a tricky point in time because we've got a trial in that time period that's going to take a lot of my time, and, but we'll look at our calendars and we'll find some days in there that work for everyone, so, I mean, if we do just need to postpone it, you know, we could always just postpone it a day and then do Tuesday and Wednesday, just reconvene the budget sessions after our regular Wednesday meeting, but we'll look at our calendars and come back with something. Are there any other days that you're aware of, any of you, that would probably be off limits?
It's the only day that affects me.
That's all I have this morning.
Brandon, you have anything?
We got our bids in for our lift station pumps that you all approved for us to gather bids for, and we were anticipating that to cost around $13,000 for that, and the bid that we got came in at $9,977, so we're really, really happy about that. Just a quick update on the drain and the parking lot of the annex here, kilo construction has been kind of understaffed and a little bit behind, and so that's still going to be happening, but we're not really sure when they're going to be able to start on that. In the meantime- In the meantime, they did a little bit of patching around those inlet drains, just to kind of alleviate some of the crater that was there in the parking lot. So, that'll be coming pretty soon.
Okay, as Alan mentioned, we got a lot of roads underwater. Our folks have been working near nonstop to make sure that we've got signs up, barricades placed, monitoring the flash flooding that occurs, trying to move signs and get them placed where the water is. We still continue to have signs stolen from us. They disappear when we're not standing right next to them. So, that continues to be an issue, but our folks are doing the best they can. We made some additional signs the other day, yesterday, to be able to be deployed. We've got everybody out again today, monitoring the situation, beginning to assess the damage, and make sure that folks are notified of, you know, that they have some advance warning when they're coming up to a flood area. So, that's an ongoing situation. I won't go into the Meridazine stuff because Alan did such a great job of showing, telling you about that. One thing to remember, we are in constant communication with emergency management and the Sheriff's Department and even the city of Ottawa. We let... They utilize one of our pumps for their... Just in case they have issues with, around their levee. We got that up and running and delivered to them yesterday. So, we work with them just as much as they work with us. So, if they have trouble with their levee system, our folks will be ready to assist when called upon. So, we all try to work together to keep, you know, folks safe and property as safe as possible as well. So, we will... Entering into this disaster is not something that we take lightly. It's important that we do it. There's a lot of work on our end to document the damages, and so we'll be really launching into that in earnest over the next few days, acquiring the information, assembling it in a meaningful way for FEMA. So, we'll... Our staff will be extremely busy taking care of that. Hopefully, someday, we'll not be talking about storm events and other things. A couple of updates on Proximity Park. We have a final walkthrough tomorrow. There's still some punch list items, some of which they're not going to be able to get to until it dries up. But the... There are some areas where we'll have to install a little bit more erosion control. You know, with these heavy rains before the grass was established, caused some things to erode, but we will, again, once it dries up a little bit, we'll go in and put some riprap in those locations to shore up those banks to keep erosion from occurring. But overall, I'm really happy with our storm drainage network. You know, Montana and Keene both have storm lines, so we don't have open ditches, except in a couple of locations where we've got the big wide ditches conveying that water. Everything is working just like it was designed to. If we had had established grass, we probably wouldn't have had some of the erosion issues that we currently have. So, we'll address those as time permits. We're in contact with the landowners, so they know what's going on. And so, once that final walkthrough is done, there'll be a punch list generated, and the contractor will work on those in the coming days. The city bid their sewer project last week, just like our intersection project. They are reviewing those bid documents now to make sure everything is, you know, squared away. We're still waiting on KDOT to give us the thumbs up on our bid project. I'm going to check in with them today. Hopefully, they'll give us approval to move forward. I've got the paperwork ready to submit for your approval. With any luck at all, we'll do that next week. See, it was mentioned about permits. Before we bid any of the projects on that site, we went through an extremely detailed permitting procedure. We had a consultant that helped us with that. And so, before one scoop of dirt was moved on that site, we had our permits in hand. So, everything that we've done is above board and per our construction documents, which were approved through the permitting procedure. So, we're pretty squared away in that regard.
It takes us to commissioner comments and board reports. Roy, you want to start?
Yeah, I'm going to say one thing that came up in the discussion. I've already notified my insurance agency for my farm, far as possible, difficulty in planting or damage to the existing corn crop. And I think the farmers are aware, their Soil Conservation Service and the Conservation Service, and, well, they put out a weekly bulletin about any kind of disaster remediations that are out there for farmers that need hay, or farmers that can't plant, or... Because, you know, our bean planting is going to be late, possibly. Corn planting is iffy right now. There's a lot of corn planted before all the floodings. A lot of it's underwater right now. So, there's mechanisms in the farm program to address agricultural disasters that occur. So, I think that kind of maybe answered Gene's question about what about the farmers? You know, farmers are kind of, you know, got everything ready to go, and they can't go anywhere because of the wet fields. And I know how it is because I'm in the same boat as the rest of the farmers. So, they're anxious, they're wondering what's going to happen, how much more rain are we going to get? And just wanted to mention that there is mechanisms to help the farmers out, securing low-interest loans or whatever needs we're going to have. I went to a couple of things. I went to the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority meeting down in Garnet with Dave Lee and Don Stotler, and Eric Pearson was there. You know, they really complimented the bike program and how successful the bike program's been. And they increased the funding for the bike program, and it's really working well over the years. Another thing came up about recycling. One thing about recycling is recycling contamination. And what that means is you have... Like, if you're recycling glass and you put something that's not glass in the bin and or paper, or whatever it is, and they're trying to develop mechanisms not to contaminate recycled stuff. They approved Lynn County wanted to get three recycling trailers. They approved them to get funding to get three recycled trailers. I asked Peg about our recycling trailers, and she said one's in good use and the other one needs some help. So, we got one recycling trailer that goes around periodically in the various communities for recycling. And Don or David might want to add to the meeting down there at Garnet. Then I went last night to the ECAN board meeting and spent a little time about Richard Jackson's leaving, and Crystal Anderson will be taking over. It'll be a seamless transition. Richard's last day is the 31st of this month. So, that'll be a little bit of different change with Richard, you know, being on board for so many years, and now no person's taking over. So, continue on with that program that ECAN does, helping community action programs. They've already started the summertime lunch program for kids at Woodward Center. It's available to anybody that wants to, at Woodward Center. Applied for $10,000 grant from the state of Kansas to supplement their programs, to help enhance the programs that exist right now. There's a certain amount of discretionary funds available that can be applied for, and they applied for $10,000 to help all their programs. Did talk a little bit about the community gardens that are around town. Had a little trouble about people stealing plants. But they don't want people stealing plants. They want people to grow vegetables and have vegetables available to the community and to support Hope House and that sort of thing. So, had a little discussion about little problems at the community gardens, but they're having trouble too because of the wet weather to really get their gardens going. I think that's it.
I wasn't here last week, so the only thing I went to was the reception for Richard Jackson before, for his retirement. And, you know, when you just see his legacy and when he's leaving this community, the leadership that he's given not only to the town of Ottawa, to the area, and even to the state of Kansas, I could only hope to do a little small fraction of that in my time as a politician. I am looking forward to being a commissioner in a year where we don't have, where Mother Nature is not hammering us so hard. I so much appreciate our first responders who are willing to be out there taking care of us when we have the bad weather. You know, when I call... If I'm stuck in the middle of the road and I call my mom and dad, they have an option to say, "Look, I told you so," and hang up. But if I call 911, they will show up, even though I chose to drive through that water when I knew I probably shouldn't do that, you know? I really do so much appreciate them, and I think about those water rescue kits that each one of our sheriff's cars are now carrying through a grant that was provided. And our road people, oh my goodness, you know? The fact that they aren't all walking in with their pink slips or they're saying, you know, the fact that they show up every day and night, and they're out there taking care of us and doing the best that they can with what, you know, with where we are right now, you know, I cannot say enough about our road people.
Oh, yeah, I... Last Thursday, I, along with Mr. David and Roy and Peg, we all attended the Solid Waste Authority Annual Meeting in Garnet. I was reappointed the chairman of the Management Committee for the Solid Waste Authority for another year. We did sign off on a couple of grants to our... With our blessings, we didn't write the grants. Other people did, but they had to meet all the requirements of our Solid Waste Authority plan for us to put our initial beside it that we agreed to them. One of them was a recycling plan. Don't know all the details. In Paola, Miami County, it's a nonprofit, and we believe we can gain from it because technology stuff, computers and so forth, it's just virtually impossible, anybody to take them anymore. And we did help them endorse them because they are going to have an outlet for that, and we're hoping that'll help our counties have a place to go with our technology stuff, which we can get rid of it now, but we have to pay top dollar to get rid of it. We just... We used to sell it. Now, we can't give it away, you know? So, in fact, we have to pay to get rid of it. So, we're hoping that'll help us by helping them. And the other one, it's like Roy mentioned, Lynn County, they actually wrote their own grant and then rented through our director, and she approved it to us. And then we signed off on it and agreed to sign the paperwork, and I signed it to approve them for a $25,000 recycling grant. And they had to... It was up to $42,000, so the rest of it was their own in-kind map. We went through the 2020 budget for the Solid Waste Authority, and it looks like we're going to prove to hold exactly the same dollar amount as the year before. We did lower two or three of our line items, but instead of bringing others up and leaving others, we took some down where we thought we needed to go up in a few. But the dollar is staying the same when the request comes through to the counties. Yesterday, with the thanks of Ms. Paddock there, our driver, through the rainstorms on the way to Erie, and I can tell you, there was a lot of new lakes between here and Erie, Kansas, that I ain't never seen before. So, and even the new school down there, when we turned... We just about didn't get down the road, even get to the new school. It was about half underwater. I mean, this is, you know, flat land, ain't no creeks or rivers for miles around anywhere. But we did go down there, and I did attend the... I might mention one other thing. David was out here ready to go with other conditions that Franklin County was in yesterday. He voted not to go and to stay here and do his job. So, you know, have to give him credit there. But I did attend for us the highway officials meeting down there, and I got a stack of paperwork. I kind of went over, showed David a little of it this morning, and I'll give it all to him, the information that I got. It was District DOT engineers give up update on District Four, all the new projects coming up within the next year. We had a presentation from Road Engineer Norman Byers with KAC, give us a good update on changes and things that are happening across the state. We discussed new members for next year, new... Mike Page from Lynn County was president last year. Mr. Commissioner Phil Dixon from Miami County will be the president of that for 2020. The officials down there put on a very nice program and very nice facility and a nice new school they have down at Erie, and want to thank them very much for that. We did get... I know Mr. Lee won't bring it up, but we had some very good comments at a board meeting we went to the other day, and I overheard a Miami County Commissioner talking to Mr. Lee about the roads, particularly just happened to come into my district and made some very good comments, and I appreciate it. Those roads, I'm glad he's not down there today because everybody's bad today. So, that's all I got.
Hospital meeting tomorrow, I'll go to. Appreciate Human Resources for putting together the packages we handed out to employees. So, I enjoy going around the departments and seeing the top-line employees and showing them at least a small way they're appreciated.
Last Wednesday, I attended the joint luncheon, and it was a pretty good one. It went a lot longer than we normally do, but there was a lot of good discussion between the city and the school and the county. And I think we went about 20 minutes longer than we normally do, but there was some good discussion there. And I attended last Wednesday the Police Officer Memorial that was at the courthouse. I... The proclamation we signed that morning, I presented it to the sheriff there again, and also the city had signed one, and they presented it to Chief Line Gardener while we were there. So, it was a lot of officers from both departments, the Highway Patrol and some other agencies were there, and a few people watching it. It was pretty good. It was not long, but it got the point across, and they did a good job with it. So, those are the two things I've attended. I also... Most of my meetings start tomorrow. So, anyway, that's all I have right now. If we have anything else. If not, we need to enter into executive session to discuss a pending legal matter pursuant to the coma exception allowing for privileged communications between the county councillor and the Board of County Commissioners. This will be for 30 minutes. It will include the administrator slash councillor and the commission. It will include the administrator slash counselor and the commission. Anyone else? If not, we'd look for a motion to approve entering to executive session for 30 minutes.
I think a motion, we enter into executive session for 30 minutes?
Motion's a second. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, we'll enter at 9:20, and be out at 9:50. Okay, we're out of executive session at 9:50. No action taken. Right quick, go over the 27th, this would be a study session, but there's that memorial, so there's nothing then. So, the next meeting will be the 29th, regular commission meeting. I believe that's all on that part of it. Okay, anything else? No, I would look for a motion to adjourn. Motion's a second. Second, all in favor? All opposed? We're adjourned.